Everybody is here?
Okay, except for Heidi.
Oh, except for Heidi, I'm sorry. Okay. Addition to the agenda?
You have three additions to the agenda, 200 business and 100 personnel, but I would also like to ask the board if they would drop two or three agenda items, and those would be the elementary school faculty handbook, the elementary student care handbook, and the district care professional handbook. We did rush to get those things because we had some changes in personnel in the offices, and we just have a little bit more work to do on it to make sure that it's right when we get the board to approve.
With those changes, I approve the agenda.
Second motion from Cheryl, second from Bruce. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry. District 741, proud of, we don't have any tonight. Public comment? No public comments tonight. Approved and correct the minutes from the July 19th, 2016 regular school board meeting, and August 3rd, 2016 special working. And that was in your packet. I will send it to you guys.
I'll make a motion that we approve, the July 19th. Do we have to do them separate, or can we do them together?
I think you're approved both.
Okay, so July 19th and August 3rd minutes.
Okay, so I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Cala. I guess my only question would be under the public comment group, Rick. Is that how you spell Rick?
Yeah.
First name? Okay. I didn't know if there was a K in there or not, so. All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Consent agenda. So as you guys remember, consent agendas, we have one, two. Two consent agendas, but quite a few things underneath number two. We're going to do it all together for the consent agenda. So, first one is review and consider approval to accept the following donations. Haynesville Chevrolet and Buick, bonus motor, $1,000 for the baseball equipment to the youth baseball program.
Yeah, and we do want to thank Chevrolet and Buick for this donation. It will be a product next week, or the next meeting. It was hard for me to make it a product now without the board having accepted it. So we'll accept it, and then at the next time, we'll do a product. We're very grateful for their donation of dollars and useful equipment.
Then number two, review and consider approval of the following non-athletic assignments for the 2016-17 school year. We have the high school instrumental music jazz band and middle school instrumental music for Thorin Knowlton. We have the yearbook, Courtney Miller, three act play director, middle school and high school, Jennifer Wurz. High school speech, Thorin Knowlton. High school vocal music, Cheryl Longham, and middle school vocals, music, Cheryl Longham. DICA advisors, Michael Hunter. And what does that DICA mean again?
I knew you were going to ask me that. It has to do with the vocational piece. I just don't know all of the pieces, but it does deal with vocational programming. I will bring that, and I knew you were going to ask me that.
And I was looking at earlier today, and I forgot to do your call, and it's always all about that.
We'll get you that.
Student council advisor, half of the year is Kelly Wheller, the other half is Jacqueline Campbell. Middle school is Don Canol, and then the other half is Kelly Wheller. FFA advisor is Natalie Glitch. One act play director is Jesse Rassman. Pop squier, Cheryl Longham, and prom advisor is Nicole Pykel. Prom banquet, Nicole Pykel. School patrol advisor, half the year is Diane Schultz, and the other half is Andrea Lura. Webmaster is Matt Dickhousing, and National Honor Society is still bullshit open, and musical attendance for the high school play is not applicable. It's one time.
We'll be coming back to the board with a few other ones that we have. We're also looking at possibly talking with the Union Board of Assembly. It's not on the schedule right now, so we'll have to do some work with the Union Board of Assembly, and it's a little jazz. So Mr. Knowlton, so there will be a few things that will come back as far as non-athletic assignments to the board in the future.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve that, if you're okay with that. I got a motion from Lou, second from Randy. Any other further discussions?
I just have one, and I don't know what to answer now, but I've been curious. When we look at student council advisors, so we have one for half a year and one for half a year.
Well, I don't know. It doesn't work half a year and half a year.
They stay with the student the whole year?
I believe they stay with the students the whole year and just do half the... Each one puts in half the time, so there's different times when each will work, but it's not, it's not half a year and half a year.
Yeah, it just looked to me like a dysfunctional level.
Really what it ends up doing is that they take the assignment, they divide it in half, and work on it that way, and they take the dollars that are assigned through the assignment and divide that in half.
Can I ask a question? That's what I was curious about.
Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Business, District 14 number four, review and consider approval of the secondary and middle school faculty handbook for the 2016.
There were no changes to the handbook other than dates, and if we had new assignments, that type of stuff, but the essence of the handbook itself remained the same.
I'll make a motion that we approve the handbook, for the secondary, high school, middle school.
We got a motion from Bruce? A second from Heidi. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Okay, we'll move on to personnel.
No, no, we have the two additions to the...
Just forgot about them, sorry. Review and consider approval of the fee schedule for the 2016-17 school year.
For the most part, everything remained the same as the last time when I went over. The only change is that I found out that we needed to raise the adult cost of the breakfast by 10 cents instead of five. We did, and we're sure of that, we did find out from the federal government that that's accurate. They did not get back to us about the adult lunches. We did raise it by five cents, but that's our best guess at this point. If it goes up higher than that, we will have to come back to the board with this document and ask for the board to change it, in which case we'd probably put it on the consent agenda because it would only be the one change for the adult piece, and the remainder would stay in place. The other piece that there was some discussion on, and I told you I'd get a little bit of information, was the student parking piece. And as I've told you in the past, there are some districts that do it, and some districts that don't do it. This is one that I could go either way on. I can see where it's nice to have some skin in the game on the part of the students. It is a problem to make sure that every student does it. Some of the, even some of the districts that charge a fee don't go out and look. It's kind of a student honor thing. So when we talked to them, they said there are certainly students that probably get by with not paying the fee. If they catch them in the districts that have it, there's kind of a progression from warning the student to talking to the parent to actually ticketing the students, probably for the same amount that the fee is. And although most districts said they haven't had to go to it, I guess the next one would be to tow the vehicle. The monies, you know, I've been asked the questions about the monies. We have not put the dollars in to a specific fund for that. I can tell you that we spend more on our parking lot than what we certainly collect from the students, so there's no doubt in my mind that the dollars that we have collected from the students have gone back into the parking lot in one form or the other. But it's really up to the board to have a little bit of discussion about this one, on whether the board wants to continue that or not.
I don't have the opinion that we should scrap that one. And my basis is that the students are what we need here in the school. They're the only thing that I bring in, the largest amount of state funds to run our operation here. Why would you take your best customers, which are the students, and have them paying an excess fee of some sorts? That's not equal everywhere. If it's a matter of taking care of the parking lots, then maybe everybody that uses the parking lot should pay something, right? There are a lot of people using the parking lots, people that use our exercise center, people that come to evening events, all of that kind of stuff. But the ones that are key to us are those students, and we want them here. I did notice on the sheet that you sent out that I believe Eden Valley didn't charge, and BBE didn't charge. I believe there was a charge in London.
New London charges, Recore charges, Oldme charges, Melrose charges.
Well, one of our largest competitors in this thing is over there at Eden Valley Watkins. I just uncomfortable with that fee unless you figure out that it's truly fair, and that everybody who's in the parking lot pays. Everybody in this whole district paid taxes and everything else to use the parking lot, and to build, and they honored us in everything we've ever done as far as needing things. It's just, personally, I just don't like that one. And I'd have to, I believe it should go to zero.
I agree with what Bruce is saying. I don't like it, but the board decides that we're going to do it, then we need some strict guidelines in place that it's going to be followed, so the kids don't park where the teachers get by with it. The, for the gym here, they are going to have to have permits on their windows so we know what vehicles have it. I don't think it's fair just to say to kids, "You're going to do it, you're in favor."
There certainly has been some discussion, if we do continue the fee, that we need to tell them specifically where to put the sticker so that it's monitored. Part of our problem has been that some of the monitoring has been done by our police liaison officers, which is kind of an interest, just with the city being short people and that kind of stuff. If we were probably in the same budget position as we were a number of years ago, I can't say that I would be anxious to get rid of any dollars that were in our budget. We are in a different place. The board needs to keep in mind that once gone, it's, you know, it's not, it's easy to bring back the second time. But I really am fine with the decision of the board on this. I have most strong feelings. I can see both sides at this point. I can see where part of it, again, to have the students be responsible a little bit, because they do use that parking lot. You can argue that other people do, but also community has people pay for the use of whatever they're doing, so they're already paying a fee, or fitness center people are already paying a fee to use those facilities. But again, I truly would say this one, you know, board, I don't have a strong opinion. I'm fine to go either way that the board decides.
The second part of that is we got the amount of money taken in. So if we have a liaison officer, which I think we intended to be in here communicating with the kids and doing that, running around the parking lot to look at tags, I just think that's a waste of time. Or if we take somebody else out here, because nobody's working for free, and we throw them on the parking lot, and you compensate that cost with what we have here, it may end up being somewhat of a wash.
And some of the schools certainly said it's just not worth their time to use any kind of staff members to do that. That's certainly been a reason why districts have not charged for it.
And typically, I mean, in the past, you know, when we first implemented it, it was for making, generating revenue, because we were looking for areas to increase our revenue and stuff like that. And I can go on both sides of the fence too with this. Part of me is thinking, you know, that we provide and we pay for bus transportation for our children. That's our obligation. For them to drive, that's their obligation, their privilege, what they want to do. So for paying, it's not going to be, for me, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be hard pressed to say, well, we're taking money from our children, they're our customers. We are ready paying for some of that liability, are ready with our busing services and stuff like that, just like anything else that you want to do extra in life, you pay for. And again, I think we're going to, if you look at the numbers, there was, you know, $5,500. That's a sixth class period that we could pay for a teacher too. And right now, I believe we're not spending any extra money really per se to policing it. So, again, those are the arguments, you know, why we, where we were and why we came up with this in the first place, but again, if the board decides that they wouldn't like to go away from it, then it's going to be gone.
How many years have we had the fee in place?
Mark would probably have a better idea. At least for, at least for four years, I know that.
About 10 years?
I think it's longer than that.
Yeah. Well, I've been on it for, I've been on board for 12 or 13 years, so it was, it wasn't my first tour, the first couple of years, it was after that, I think.
It was.
Yeah, I think it's about 10 years.
But again, it doesn't make any difference.
Well, and once you take it away, I think it's going to be harder to do it back.
You could bring it back. If you had to bring it back, you could bring it back. You can start saying, you know what, communicate, you know, when they sign up, you know, $10 goes towards the department, or whatever. You could bring it back, it's a totally different animal. I don't think you could never bring it back.
Oh, I didn't say you couldn't bring it back. It's usually never as easy to bring something back as it is to get rid of it. But in fairness too, we also have the long, the tenured facilities maintenance, you know, program now, which we never had before, until just recently, which will help the district tremendously with our facilities, and that was never here before.
I agree with not charging the students. I don't, I don't see a reason for it, but on the other side, when they have their parking stickers, we have a way to trace boot row of what, in case it needs to be, but do they have to register their vehicles at the office if they are driving to school and there is no parking permit?
That would be something, you look at, some schools do that. They don't, I can't remember which school off the top of my head, but they don't charge a fee, but do expect students to register their vehicles.
Which, yeah, I would say you have to.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
In that case, I would agree.
That would certainly make sense.
Not charging would make sense.
I'll make a motion that we accept the fee schedule as is, next thing, the student parking fee out of it, and a registration of the vehicles that are here.
I would prefer not to do that.
You want to do another one?
All you're going to do is, you're going to do the fee schedule, the procedures and everything else, we'll certainly talk, and if it's something that's beneficial to the school, I would prefer the school itself to know that.
Then I would drag the last part of that. We have, I'll make a motion, we approve the fee schedule as is, less the student parking fee.
So I got a motion from Bruce?
I'll second that.
And a second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Number six, review and consider approval of the designation of this Haynesville area school superintendent, Robert Hury, with authorities to authorize and use user access to the Minnesota Department of Education's website, and give the superintendent the responsibility of assigning jobs, duties to the local educational agency staff.
This is a yearly thing that we need to adopt by the end of August. It gives me the authority to, if somebody needs to get into one of the MDE secure sites. It used to be when I first got here, I'd have to fill out a form, send it to MDE, they'd get the form, and after a certain amount of time, they would send something back to us saying that person has access. Less MDE, because now we have an electronic way of going into, I can went to it, because the board has given me the authority to do it, and approve it on the website, then very quickly, MDE gets back to us and it's approved. It's a real good deal, but we have to, and we have to do it every year.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
A motion from Bruce and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. So now we're going to go down to personnel. Review and consider approving the resignation request from Christina Davey, language arts teacher effective in the year.
We hate to see, to lose Katrina. You know, it's just one of those things, this is certainly in her best interest to do that. I regretfully would recommend that we accept it. The only concern I had was still in the position, but we, I just sent out to you guys letting you know that I was going to open it beforehand, and that it would come to the board for action, so we had it open now, so hopefully we'll get some good candidates, and we'll be able to vote to issue.
Was she, was she responsible, or one of the advanced classes then?
Yes, she is. So we'll have to, that whole piece will have to be looked at depending on who we're able to hire.
I'm going to approve that resignation.
I got a motion from Cheryl. Second from Heidi. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Review and consider approval of hiring Idris Alura, interventionist, para-professional, 6.25 hours per day effective August 29, 2016.
If you remember, we removed the position because we weren't sure we were going to get the grant. We have gotten the grant, the position's coming back.
I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Cala. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Review and consider approval to hire Holly Kern, para-professional effective August 29, 2016.
All abstaining from this vote.
One thing I would ask when the motion comes in, and I do apologize to the board, I forgot to put the hours in, so it would be four, 6.5 hours per day. So if that could be included in the motion, I'd be great.
So I got a motion from Heidi.
I'll second.
Second from Lou. Any other further discussion? And with Randy abstaining, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Review and consider increasing Sally's preschool, or preschool readiness system, four hours per week, six hours per day, from five days per week, five, six hours per day, okay?
We are excited that we've added another day to that program. We think it's going to be great for our students.
Motion to approve.
So I got a motion from Lou and a second from Cala. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Review and consider approval of hiring Tyra Walters, fitness center supervisor for an average of 12 hours per week effective August 12, 2016.
As fees were sold.
A replacement.
Yep.
So I got a motion from Cheryl. Second from Cala. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. All right. So we're going to move on to the informational reports, elementary principal report, David Orley.
Good evening. Well, first of all, I just want to thank the Sorio staff for all their hard work so far this summer. We also had some painting done in the hallway, so you'll see some changes there. And getting things ready, it's been busy over there with PAWS program every day. We just finished up with the Vacation Bible School, and we had some summer school things, and right now we have our theater camp, and they'll be going to the Chan Hessen Theater next week to watch a play, so they're excited about that. We have registration tomorrow, and that will be the opportunity to get your pictures taken and pay fees and things like that. Katie is getting acquainted to the position. She's doing a great job. It's, can be a little overwhelming, so that's, I apologize for the delay with the handbooks. We had some formatting, things that we needed to work out, so we'll have that ready next time. On Friday morning, we have a meet and greet from 8 to 9 tomorrow. I've invited staff to come in and say hi to Katie and have my own, and some coffee, so if you're available for that, it's 8 o'clock to 9 o'clock. And that really is about all I have, just kind of gearing up for the school year. Any questions for me?
Is Katie's question, right?
Yes.
The only reason I say that is, all the others get announced on our, to the television, and that was during a special meeting, and nobody knows what that intended was. Nor did we read the minutes.
We'll be in Minnesota if they want to go.
Go forward, yeah. Wait, did he report?
All right, good evening. So, summer camp PAWS, we ended up with 83 kids this summer, so when David talks about busy at the elementary school, it's been pretty crazy. We have some phenomenal staff, and it's been great. We had 61 kids last year, so, and we had more full-time this year, so it's just been really busy. We're blessed that we were able to utilize three classrooms. Last year, we operated 61 kids out of one classroom, so we are a little concerned about fall. We know we're not going to retain all the kids, because some kids can go home for an hour, a half hour, whatever, but we're concerned just about space for outgrowing our room during the school year, but we may just have to be a little bit more creative in that, but good problem to have. What you have in front of you is kind of neat, is this is all student-led, from a couple kids in the PAWS, and they came up on their own with the PAWS press, and so it's something for you to read, it's cute, they even did a...
That's all program went in.
They even have their own cartoon in it, so that was kind of neat, just kind of sharing a little bit about PAWS. Just to give you an idea of what they've been up to this year, each week was, of course, they visit another different country, so they've been to France, China, Ireland, USA, Australia, Egypt, Germany, Jamaica, Brazil, Madagascar, Mexico, Switzerland, and South Korea, and we've had speakers from quite a few of those too, that have come in and shared, and it's just been pretty great. They've been to Como Park, Bunsen Venture, Healthy Villa exhibit, Sterns Museum, Erickson's Petting Zoo, Sog Center Splash Park, Lake George Splash Park, Pine Grove Zoo, Air Max Trampoline Park, Dorothy B, Olson Water Park, Spicer Park and Beach, Gaines Lake Beach, Home Depot today, Wake Park Splash Park, they made their own craft at Home Depot. Project Brad Zoo will be coming, Coronas Lanes and the Big Thrill Factory, so. They've been all over the place, so it's been good, and we've got kids from your competitor, Eden Valley, that came this summer for our program, so we have kids coming from other districts, so. Great big thanks to Haynesville Chevrolet and Buick. That was a $1,000 cash donation or check, and new equipment, probably $500 worth of equipment, so they've been a huge supporter for us. Our summer rec numbers were real strong this year. Great big thank you to all of our parent volunteer coaches, that's why they have the success we do. And we're always a season ahead, so our fall brochure goes to the press this Friday, and will be mailed out a week from Saturday, so the 19th, in your mailbox, so. Any questions for me?
Why are you worried about room? It sounds like you weren't there.
Yeah, if we weren't, if it wasn't 11 and a half hours a day, then we could be busy, but it's...
Sounds like a great group.
Yeah, great staff there, so it's pretty cool. Any other questions? Good, thanks.
Thank you.
Activity structure.
Tomorrow's a big day for us too, with the registration available for activities for kids. On Monday, Fall Sports Volleyball, Cross Country, and Football. Started, just wanted to make you aware that it's highly probable that we'll be bringing an assistant cross-country coach to the board for approval. We think that our numbers will be high enough, again, to do that position that's already been in place, we just haven't been filling it because of low numbers, so I'm excited about that. Gym floor project, I don't think I've been here to report on that since that project's been done. It's not really actually completed, it's kind of been a little bit of a headache getting some standards. For those of you who might not be aware, we added additional side court volleyball, so there's two side courts that can be played in regulation size, well, to put the standards in the floor, they pre-drilled a hole, and if this is a conduit running through the ceiling, they drilled the break there.
conduit running through the ceiling, they drilled it right there, so thankfully they didn't hit the conduit, but needless to say, that was about a three-quarter inch hole, and the standard needs to be four inches, right? So we can't put those in the floor, so we finally ordered the equipment, but it's not in yet, so it probably will be next week before they get that in, but well, quite an upgrade for that, so we're excited about that. Two of the three scoreboards outside are up, if you haven't noticed, they're originally gonna use the poles from the baseball scoreboard to put up for the softball, but when you see the softball and go up, you'll realize why we're not, they're not gonna be nearly big enough for that. It's gonna be basically the same setup as the other ones, so on two poles rather than three. Saturday, September tenth, we're planning a workday to install the outfield fence and all the work out on the softball field for the community, so we're excited about doing that, you're welcome to come. We had some seventy mile per hour winds or something, and Tom's speaker blew off on the tower out side, so we went up in air, not me, but last week replacing that, and then we're replacing, upgrading our wireless sound system in the gym as well. So, a lot of things kind of happening, and it's gonna get kind of busy starting now. Any questions for me?
Thanks, though. Building the ground.
I'm just gonna run through a few projects we've had this summer and how we're doing, huh? The painting of the parking lots has been completed at the high school, the elementary school, we're kind of waiting for until the rooms get done. They're supposed to start the curving and sidewalks later this week, and the road next week. We've replaced nine parking lot lights, four in the middle school and five out in the high school with LED lighting. New bathroom doors were hung in the high school boys locker room by the stools. We replaced six boxes in the high school office and locker rooms. Drinking pumps went in this week with bottle fillers.
And those are also being quit now in locker rooms, right?
Two in the locker rooms and one upstairs here by the one. And then the fourth one goes over to elementary school, but that isn't there. Haynes was wired in the days, so the locker room should be done by the end of this week. We installed thirty-five new mats in the wrestling room due to fire marshal orders, and we'll be installing the rest in the next three years. And we've not heard back about the rock wall at the elementary school, it will end up changing, or actually, we're gonna end up changing some of it, but having to replace it, I mean, they're supposed to get back to me. The adult community head center is getting re-roughed this week, you know, actually, they shouldn't be close to done except for the sheet metal brick.
And that was a surprise for our budget, right? We didn't expect that to happen.
We got six new doors due to fire marshal orders at the elementary school, and the courtyard door was installed today. It won't be completely finished, but it's closed.
And we still need to turn the other door around.
So you got your door too, huh?
Yeah, we got that installed. The library lights were all changed up from LED to LED lighting. We are going to do the entry, and it will split right off the library. I'm sure that's all the LED lighting, and a few done at the auditorium. Yule Company has put in a new air-hanger wood shop, which was beyond repairs, so that was put in this summer. The netting project over the playground at the baseball should be starting tomorrow. That's been a long one. And I don't know if anybody's seen the new sign out front, we put a directional sign outdoors to access the buildings. The last thing I got is VICA, stands for Vocational Industrial Clubs of America.
Thank you, I don't have to record that, I'll have that noted.
If anybody has any questions, that's all we're standing, that was a good to know.
The administrative report, Robert Hewitt.
Just a few things, August is here and it's disappearing fast. Teacher workshops on Monday, August twenty-ninth, Tuesday, August thirtieth, Wednesday, August thirty-first, open houses on August thirty-first from five to seven, five to seven-thirty that night. There'll be treats Monday morning, seven forty-five, be great to see board members there, and then we'll welcome back the staff they did at eight o'clock in the auditorium on Monday, so summer's disappearing fast. Solar Garden, I checked on that again, they're still waiting for approval from Excel, so we're kind of on a hold on that. Technology Summit, have Recorde here in the summer, we had seventy staff members, I believe, participate in that technology summit, so that's fantastic. We were approved by MDE for a few comp dollars, so the plan is approved now, I will bring that to the board at the next meeting for board approval. The staff members have already voted on this particular piece, we have some work to do with handbooks and stuff, and we'll be meeting with our committee tomorrow morning, so there's a number of things, job openings that we need to get out now before that, but I'll give you more information after the next meeting when you approve, at least I hope you approve. We hope to have polls and netting up this, well, I don't know, they are supposed to show up this week, right?
For that playground.
For the playground. They're supposed to be here tomorrow to start working on that, they do have the netting, so I'm still gonna keep my fingers crossed that maybe that thing gets up yet before the last baseball games, we'll see. Elementary school, it's been mentioned, they'll be starting that next week.
Early next week.
Early next week, hopefully they'll, they say they'll get that done. The Chamber wants to have an event in the stadium during Town and Country Days on June ninth. If the board remembers, they have to get board approval for that, it's outside of the realm of the Baseball Association itself, so when the Chamber is available, I'll bring them into a meeting to make a proposal to the board so that the board can decide whether or not they're going to let a different type of event be in the stadium, but that needs board approval. The road work, I wish it was already done, the closer we get to school, the more nervous I am. I just don't know what we're gonna do if we don't have access to two roads and then even the staff start coming in, it's not gonna be good, but they say they're gonna get it done on time, and I'm hopeful that they will. I'm working on utilization report to be sent to the feds concerning the reserve center, I'll send it out once it's done, and then we'll wait and see what happens. Colleen, the plaque is up, if you haven't taken a look, if I can remember how to do this, of course, it's right there, just to show the public what that looks like. That is what the plaque looks like, but it is already up and already in the auditorium, so that's great. Let's see, MDE reviewed our food service program this summer. Now we have a list of things that we need to change to accommodate what they're looking for. Just be aware that one of the things that they're saying is they really want somebody kind of in charge of our program in the district. So I am gonna work with our head cooks and see if possibly one of those cooks is interested in learning more, and we would certainly have to pay more dollars, but then that person would eventually kind of take over and be in charge of the whole program. Penny from Albany, Recorde District will still be helping us, I have increased the number of days with anticipation that she will help to train that individual with a great portion of those days, so that eventually we'll lean away from Penny, and we'll have a person who will start to kind of take more control over. Won't be an actual, what I consider, head of food service, I don't think we can afford that, but we'll add additional responsibilities, and that person will be in charge, have more responsibilities, and again, with responsibilities, we'll have to come some funding with that. So be aware that that's gonna come down the pipe. Tenure, just to let the board know, Maria Rasmussen and Theron Nolan have now gotten tenure, that's by contract, so just to let the board know. And I think that's it, any questions you have for me?
Any other sharing? Does anybody else have anything to say?
I'd like to make a comment, I missed most activities last weekend at the stadium, but I have heard from everybody that was there, that was absolutely excellent, and it went off without a catch. So everybody involved with putting that together, people that are involved here and everybody else should be commended.
I would agree, I've heard a lot of things about it.
Like that, yeah, a really positive thing.
And if you're still interested this weekend, do you have more?
Yep.
Okay, we got a motion from Lou. Second from Cheryl, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry.